Okay. I will present item number 30, which is agendized as consideration for the membership status of an individual on Planning Commission. It is standard procedure for the city auditor to review all commissions in the city. And an audit is usually done every three years by charter. And I think people have seen that, what the issue is, if you see it on the screen. So I'm speaking to the fact that the Planning Commission was audited for three years. And that audit report was delivered to the Audit Committee of the City Council at the time Councilwoman Cordy, Councilwoman Solange Whitehead, and Councilwoman Littlefield received that report. That report detailed the performance of four years, and the purpose of that report was to show where all the matters that were on the agendas. And it also included information regarding individuals, absences, and recusals. This kind of audit was not directed towards any individual, and we will see similar audits in the future on every other commission and board. What I do want to point out is that audit report came to this city council on June 12th, sorry, January 12th. On January 12th, the agendized item was the review of that. It's all public information, both the audited reports as well as the presentation, and that was accepted. The main reason for that was to see whether Planning Commission could or should perhaps be sunsetted, but it also included all of that other information. When I received that information as mayor, I reviewed it, read it, and I was alarmed by attendance, recusals, and absences of particular individual and individuals. Because the duty of all commissions is to safeguard and serve the citizens of Scottsdale. That being said, this commission has seven members, and on several occasions, as many as two were recused from that commission. So whether this audit will be for a Parks and Rec Commission, and number of meetings and recusals, it would be equally alarming if they were such high numbers. I did bring this item forward. It was by chance that I looked at this in detail and tried to contact the individual by phone, but for about two weeks, but there's no one picking up, and I certainly didn't want to leave a message. So by chance, I met the individual and was able to speak with him, and the facts speak for themselves, so I am bringing it forward today. We can discuss any aspect of this, and I would, if there's any questions, first of all, from any councilpeople as to the ability for our, for us to conduct this, I'm pleased to state. Councilwoman Janik?
Yes, I have a question for Attorney Sherri Scott. What guidance does the ordinance provide in terms of service from boards and commissions?
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor. The ordinance provides under the Board and Commission section in Chapter Two that appointed board and commission members serve at the pleasure of the City Council, which is a polite way of saying that the council could remove an appointed board or commission member for any reason at any point in time. The ordinance goes on to discuss absences and tardiness, and I can talk to you more specifically about that, if you would like, and more generally to state that if any appointed board or commission member becomes unable or unwilling to serve, and let me pause and say that, that is a decision that the council would make in its discretion, whether somebody became unable or unwilling to serve, that that matter could be placed on a council agenda for the council to consider whether or not to remove or replace that commission member. So that's the general guidance that you see in the boards and commission ordinance. And again, there is a specific number of absences or tardinesses that would trigger that same process of placing it on an agenda for consideration of removal or replacement, which would not be applicable here. Here, it's just the more general provisions.
If there are any questions, I'd like to move on to public comment at this point, and then after that, we can discuss a motion, and so I will turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor Ortega, and members of council. Our first public comment will be coming from Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smith, you should now be able to hit star six on your device and begin your public comment.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Mayor and council, for your record, my name is Prescott Smith, and I reside at 6371 East Weldon Avenue in Scottsdale. I've provided a statement to you that should be on your desks, and hopefully you've had a chance to review that. As you may know, I am a native of Scottsdale with a long history of community involvement, and I'm proud of my four-plus years of service on the Planning Commission. I'm sure that you can understand why I continue to be shocked by the mayor's approach to me. I believe that my personal experiences and professional expertise provide me with unique insights on issues that come before the Planning Commission. I also believe that my performance on the Planning Commission has resulted in better projects and a better Scottsdale. It is important that our boards and commissions are filled with engaged citizens who have knowledge and expertise on the issues that come before them. I have not violated any rules or conducted myself in an unethical manner. In fact, it's quite the opposite. I believe that I have held myself to the highest moral standard so as not to put myself or the city in an undesirable position. If there are questions or issues relating to the performance of different city boards and commissions, having a broader look at how they are operated and governed certainly seems like a more appropriate course of action than this. Scottsdale is a wonderful city that has so many selfless citizens who donate their time and give back to their community. No individual volunteer should be singled out and treated in this manner. The support that I've received from so many members of our community on this issue has been heartwarming and greatly appreciated. I love the city of Scottsdale, and I really hope to continue my service on the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Our next public comment will be coming from Mr. Maxwell. Mr. Maxwell, you should now be able to press star six on your device and begin your public comment.
Mayor Ortega, Vice Mayor Janik, and members of the council, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Kevin Maxwell. I didn't realize I was going to be following Mr. Smith because he, it's going to sound like I'm echoing some of the things that you mentioned, but I will go ahead and say that what I find about this issue is interesting is that, you know, this is a very specialized commission. The skill set needed to sit on that commission and to be an advocate and to make some quality decisions requires a breadth of knowledge and experience about urban planning, development, zoning, and some legal aspects around development. And that is a very difficult thing to do. In a perfect world, it'd be great where we could have all the council members not be members who never have to recuse themselves at all. But if we had that, then they may or may not be able to bring the breadth of knowledge that Mr. Smith brings to the council. As he mentioned, he has never broken any rules, never violated anything. His attendance is not in question, his tardiness is not in question. He has had to recuse himself from time to time when he feels it's in the best interest of the city. And I think that I would typically agree with that. As a matter of fact, I would go as far as to say that he has erred on the side of caution when he thinks there might be any type of integrity issue. Mr. Smith has served our community well. I'd rather have him continue to serve on the board and on the commission and bring us his expertise and advocate for good quality projects and leverage his skills, rather than having somebody on the council who is not able to speak with as much experience as he has. So I would encourage the council to let Mr. Smith serve out the rest of his term, and perhaps in the future, if we need to make any changes to his service on the board, we can always do that. But I think he's done a wonderful job for our city, and I encourage the council to keep him on board for the duration of his term. Thank you so much.
And for our next public comment, we will go to Mr. Alexander. Mr. Alexander, please press star six and begin your public comment.
Hi, my name is Jason Alexander, 9976 East Jasmine Drive. I do not agree with this effort to oust Mr. Smith. I think this action is both short-sighted and unprofessional. Recusals and conflicts are a concern for any commissioner, but they are also a byproduct of expertise. I first met Mr. Smith in 2017, when the Desert Discovery Center came before the Planning Commission. And at first, I fell for the us versus them, evildoer, sold-out council jargon. But not long after, Mr. Smith and I sat down for coffee, and he shared that while he obviously is within the industry, he brings a great deal of specific expertise to his role. His job is outreach, soliciting feedback to help improve projects. We need experts on our Planning Commission. Council should adopt a more thoughtful policy toward recusals and conflicts that goes through public comment and provides a gaugeable standard, then Mr. Smith and others can be judged under those approved standards. Moving the goalposts is unfair. Mr. Smith has served admirably under existing rules and deserves better. We are a golden rule city, and this is not how members of high-performing organizations treat each other. How many of you have spent your entire careers in modern companies with dedicated HR departments? This sort of action is not accepted under those types of measures and standards. Scottsdale's leading companies like Nationwide, Honor Health, GoDaddy, Yelp, and PayPal have clear rules and measurables of performance reviews based on a culture of servant leadership and mutual respect from top to bottom. This is an unprofessional, unprecedented move for this council. It is punitive and not collaborative. It bullies a single individual without any measurable guidelines. Last week, the economic development team told you that Scottsdale accounts for 25% of the entire IT portfolio for the state of Arizona. Scottsdale's brand is much bigger than one commissioner and a sudden need to fire him. Please be professional, forward-thinking, and inclusive organization, and follow the golden rule. Thank you for your time.
Mayor Ortega and members of council, that concludes public comment on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. I now close public comment. I have Councilwoman Whitehead.
Thank you, Mayor. So I wanted to focus on what the end goal is here, and in 2019, I brought up a similar request, and the majority of the council did agree with me to review recusals and absenteeism on commissions and boards. But 2020 happened, and we didn't finish the job. So I guess my question is, I think that we all have a similar end goal. It's been 10 years, and since this, since the city council has reviewed boards and commissions, a lot of things have changed. I would like to see that happen. I think that there are a number of ways that we can improve our boards and commissions. I can tell you that there is room for improvement, and I can cite two examples. I attended a meeting in December of a commission, and there were about five or six staff members lined up to speak at that meeting, and we didn't have a quorum. Fortunately, if, I don't know, maybe five or 10 minutes in, another board member did show up. So we have a problem, and we have five or six people applying for every position we appoint. So I think we can do better there. And on the recusals, yes, I think that, you know, I appreciate people being honest and recusing themselves, but I can tell you that I've had recently a citizen who was pouring her heart out to the Planning Commission, trying to protect her quality of life, and she called me up after the meeting when she found out that a commissioner was related to a person working on the application, on the applicant's side, and cried. So can we do better? Yes. So then the question is, does this get us there? I mean, I think our goal is to improve the commissions and boards and to improve public trust. I don't think, I don't think this gets us there. In fact, I think that voting on one commissioner without clear metrics of what we want from the commissioners will undermine public trust, so that sets us back. And I just think this commission, or this council, is so able to instead invest time and ask staff, get input from staff, and find a way, a path forward that will raise the bar. I mean, I want to review ethics. 10 years ago, there wasn't Nextdoor.com. There's a lot of things that we can review as a council to improve the commissions and improve the process. And I just don't think the focus on one commissioner, because I, I think it's, there's a problem with having two, often two people recusing themselves, but I don't think we have a clear-cut metrics that we've applied to that, where these commissioners know in advance, or perhaps they themselves would not apply for the commissions. So that would be, my recommendation is to have on an agenda a review of the guidelines on boards and commissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I do hear you as a future council agenda item, but that's not what's agendized today. And I would certainly support, by the way, that tightening. This was brought forward because of an extraordinary case, and it would, it is our oversight and our duty, in my opinion, to take action. I see no other comments. Do I hear a motion? Okay, I have some comments. Councilwoman Caputi, then Councilwoman Littlefield and Durham.
I have quite a few comments.
Good, good.
I just don't see how Commissioner Smith is either unable or unwilling to perform this function. I'm not convinced here. I completely oppose removing Prescott Smith from the Planning Commission before his second appointed term completes next December, both as a resident and a councilwoman, and as a former volunteer for this city on the Development Review Board. This is a volunteer position, and I know firsthand how much time and preparation and sacrifice goes into this job. Mr. Smith has been a tireless volunteer for our city for many years and an engaged citizen working to improve our community. Mr. Smith is a fully qualified commissioner, duly appointed twice by this city council, not just one member. It would be unjustified to remove him at this point and would reflect poorly on how this city treats its volunteers. Planning commissioners are appointed for their professional expertise in order to advise this council on planning and zoning issues. Having professional expertise in this area will naturally generate conflicts from time to time. Mr. Smith has done the right thing, going above and beyond to recuse himself for any real or perceived conflict of interest on a case. Why would we punish him for this? It sends a horrible message to our community and to the others on commissions and boards. The average hearing agenda has probably, what, five cases per meeting? So we're saying with these numbers that were presented to us, out of 400 cases, he's recused himself from maybe 10% or less. We're not talking about an absence from an actual meeting. We're talking about recusing from a particular case inside of a meeting. Commissioners recuse themselves for a case, not the meeting. That's why we have seven members, because, again, people who do this for a living are going to have conflict, and every once in a while, we need to recuse. Mr. Smith does community outreach for a living. He makes sure that residents are informed and aware of projects in their neighborhood, and that's something we all say we want more of. This makes him, in my opinion, uniquely qualified as an advisor to this council. As Councilwoman Whitehead suggested, we do need to establish parameters and good process and not just randomly single someone out. To me, this feels more like a personal vendetta than a professional action. I say, let's have a review of the city's policies pertaining to commissioners and board members so that we're all clearly moving forward in the future. I have a few more comments. I want to just say that planning commissioners are here to advise this council. We certainly don't have to take their advice. We shouldn't try to create advisory boards that are filled with echo chambers, people who are just going to tell us what we want to hear, right? Good advice depends on having a mix of opinions and experiences and viewpoints. That's what we all bring to this council, and Mr. Smith has proven to be valuable to this community time and time again. I just want to conclude by saying that we have now wasted most of last week and all of the weekend on this item, trying to remove a valued and experienced volunteer when we should have been working on much more important and pressing city items. Prematurely terminating Prescott Smith from the Planning Commission is a terrible idea for the city and a terrible message to our valued volunteers and our citizens. I do not think we should move forward with this. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Littlefield?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I understand fully that all board members and all commissioners serve at the pleasure of the council, period. And if it's time for one to move on, it is our duty and our responsibility and our right, our power, to say, no, go away. That's what we do as taking responsibility for the boards and commissioners. We appoint them. We also have the right to de-appoint them, if you will. I also believe a board or commission is weakened when one or more of its members must be recused on a regular basis. I chaired the Audit Committee when this came through. Those numbers are not in question. He did recuse himself, and rightfully, on all of those issues and all of those projects. One of the things that should be known about those projects is those are not the minor little projects that go through on the consent agenda. Those are the major projects that go through the Planning Commission for the city of Scottsdale, and they're usually very, very large, John Barry-type projects. So they're not immaterial, so that's one thing to consider. I do agree with Councilwoman Caputi. We should have a study session on this, and we should look at this. I think it's long past due. There have been other occasions when commissioners have been taken off commissions and boards, and it's time we took a look at what we're doing, why we're doing it, and maybe updating what our rules and regulations are for ourselves. And this would be something just for the council to do. We have the right to remove a sitting commissioner or board member, but we ought to have the rules and regs so that it's not a political agenda item, and that bothers me. We should include in that review when these recusals are needed, when they're not needed, and the maximum number that we should consider before we start looking at this and taking somebody off. There should be exceptions, maybe, of health or family issues or things like that. So we need to have a questionnaire-type thing, like we used for our charter officers, to have each one of us separately and individually look at this and say, is this acceptable, is this not? And we don't have anything like that. So I would agree with you. We need a study session. We need to say, how can we upgrade this? How can we update this and make it better? Because we are ultimately responsible. We're the council. We appoint them, and we can de-appoint them. Prescott Smith is serving for an additional two years. If we leave him on the Planning Commission, he will undoubtedly recuse himself during those two years for some pretty major projects, because John Barry is in charge of most of the big guns in town. And that's something that we need to consider here tonight. I think it weakens our commissions and our boards when we don't have full membership participating, because there's a reason the boards are the size they are. Seven members on the Planning Commission has to give a well-rounded viewpoint, has to give enough input, and the commissioners get enough input from the citizens and from other sources, that we get a total view of that project, that we can see what's going on with it. And when one commissioner is gone for the big projects, then we don't get that quite as well as we should. That is my big concern. We need to make sure our commissions are working properly and that we get maximum input and benefit from them as a council. That's why they exist. I don't like the way this was done either. I don't, I think there's a better way that we could work to make this kind of thing happen or not happen, and I would like to include that in the study session. How can we upgrade those rules? How can we update what we do and how we know we're doing it properly? And so those are things I would be interested in doing, and when this meeting is over, I'm going to suggest we do that. So on the other hand, we do have the right to do this. It is within our purview to take a commissioner off if we do not believe he is fulfilling his function on the commission and if it's to the detriment of the city. So that's where I am on this, and that's where I'm going to be. Thank you.
I see Councilmember Durham.
Thank you, Mayor Ortega. A lot of people are trying to make this about Mr. Smith, and it shouldn't be about Mr. Smith. It's not fair to him that this is centered on him. And in particular, it's not about his ethics or his honesty. It's quite possible, as several people have mentioned, that he's been overly scrupulous. As a former lawyer, I understand the difficulties in making recusal decisions, and they are very difficult. But the end result is still the same. This is not about Mr. Smith. It's about Scottsdale. And right now, as Councilmember Littlefield has stated, Scottsdale doesn't have a full complement on the Planning Commission in too many situations. And we all rely on the Planning Commission. I do. On major issues, I watch the videos, I listen to what they have to say, and so I think it's very important that we have a fully functioning commission as we rely on it. Some people, Councilmember Littlefield and Whitehead, have both suggested that there ought to be clearer standards, and I agree, that's a failing of this council, and we ought to fix that. But in the end, my view is, I come back to, this is about Scottsdale. This is not a random selection of an individual for personal reasons. It's not that at all. The recusals are, in my view, are just too many to, and those recusals interfere with the proper functioning of the Planning Commission. So it's a very unfortunate situation. I agree with Councilmember Littlefield that it's, it's not fair that it happened this way, but we've got to be fair to Scottsdale, and that's where our loyalties lie. And so for that reason, I would, I would be in favor of dismissing Commissioner Smith from the Planning Commission. Thank you.
I see no other speakers. Councilmember Milhavin.
Councilman Durham, I agree with you, it should not be about Prescott Smith, but it is. All right? If we need to have a rule around recusals, while I don't think that's a good idea, because I think there's, as you suggested, there's a lot of complications between what's a statutory definition of a conflict versus what is perceived, and I certainly wouldn't want to put in any rules that would create a disincentive for folks to declare conflict, because I think we get ourselves into a lot of hot water. But despite the fact that I don't think we need that rule, I think that if we're going to take action based on what we think the expectations should be, we should not retroactively create a rule. I agree with you that it's about Scottsdale, but I disagree with you that the commission is not fully functioning. I'd also point out that, this is the, planning is an advisory body, so they really have no formal, they make recommendations to us, they help inform us on what they think, and so I don't, well, I do think it's about Scottsdale. I don't think that it's a disservice to Scottsdale to, when someone recuses themselves, I actually think it's a service. And I want to go on more, right? It shouldn't be about one individual, but it's interesting when, you know, the mayor in his opinion piece in the paper says, we could put a rule in place, but it wouldn't allow me to remove- allow me to remove this person." That sounds pretty personal. And when the newspaper starts calling for comments on this item before the agenda is posted with the additional comment on there, it seems to me it's a whole lot more than creating good process, and it's a whole lot about attacking an individual. So I certainly agree with my colleagues who think that we should do a review of boards and commissions, and I certainly don't think we should retroactively take any action on a board member for a rule that we might put in place in the future. And I do think that this was made personal when it should not have been. So with that, I would like to make a motion to take no action on this item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those against say no. Those four, yes.
No action means, yes means no action.
Oh, no action. Okay, yes means no action, and no means action. Now, yes means, you said.
If the motion fails, I'm willing to make a second motion.
Okay. So if the motion fails, the negative has been stated. So I will be voting no. Wait, excuse me, no. That was an error. It's a no vote. So the motion failed, and Ms. Janik, would you, do you have a motion?
Well, I more have a comment, and my comment is, I put a lot of thought into this. For me, this is not personal. Basically, it's just that we have these boards and commissions to help us make decisions, and if we don't have the sufficient number of people making these decisions, it makes it difficult for all of us. And there are other boards and commissions that would be very, very happy to have someone with Prescott Smith's credentials. I do think he's done a very good job. I understand everything you've said, but at the end of the day, I agree with Councilwoman Durham that we need to make sure that we have our full complement of people on board when we hear all these cases, so that we get better representation and hopefully solid decisions. So I guess the motion would be that we would vote to dismiss Mr. Smith from the Planning Commission.
Thank you. I hear a motion and a second.
A second.
Second from Counselor Durham. And just a final remark on my part. I believe Councilwoman Milhavin made the public opinion and took, made her statements publicly before I had to respond to her. So please note that, that you chose to do that in a public forum, and then I had to return and probably shorten this meeting somewhat. So I, all in favor, say aye. My screen, it needs to be reset here, but I am an aye. I'm getting a message box. There we go. Thank you. The motion passes. Now with that, we are concluded with the agenda items.